Good evening. My name is Sherri Carter Allen, and we are excited that you have chosen to join us tonight for the Peoria Town Hall Debate that is sponsored by Collaborative Peoria and the Monday Gathering, where we are streaming live from the beautiful facilities of the Frank Campbell Community Center. Our three-night Town Hall Meeting Debates that began on this past Monday present candidates that are running for City Council seats in Peoria districts that, according to citizen interest, are the most controversial. Those districts are Peoria City Council Districts 1, 2, and 3. On Monday evening, we focused on Council District 1. Last evening, Council District 2. And tonight, on our Town Hall's final night, we will focus on Council District Number 3. As a reminder, for our viewers' convenience, you are able to review all three nights on the Facebook page of the Monday Gathering. Also, as you may notice, we have live audience participation. Each candidate was allowed to invite 10 participants which have been appropriately distanced according to COVID-19 mitigation. Now, without further ado, I will introduce to you our moderator for the evening. Attorney Susan O'Neill is a Peoria resident. She has practiced law for 30 years and is licensed in both state court in Illinois and federal court, including the United States Supreme Court. Attorney O'Neill has represented poor and disabled people for over 25 years of her career and was formerly the public guardian and public administrator for Macon County. Ms. O'Neill also served as both an assistant state's attorney and an assistant public defender in Peoria County. She currently serves as a senior staff attorney for Equip for Equality in Springfield, Illinois. Attorney O'Neill is a graduate of Illinois State University and the University of Illinois-Chicago John Marshall Law School. I introduce to you for the evening your moderator, Attorney Susan O'Neill.
The purpose for the Town Hall Debate is to give our candidates a final opportunity to inform and educate voters regarding their political platform and clearly communicate their plans for District 3. The following are the rules of engagement. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening statement. After opening statements, each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each question and one minute for a follow-up response if needed. Once the time has expired, we will expect each candidate to respectfully close their statement. After we ask questions that reflect Council District 3 citizen concerns, we will give the opportunity for two audience members from the Councilman Riggernbach's side and two audience members from candidate Thetford's side to ask one question each to either candidate they choose. After all questions have been asked, each candidate will be given a two-minute closing statement. I will now introduce to you our candidates for District 3. Incumbent Councilman Tim Riggernbach, welcome, Councilman. And candidate Gail Thetford, welcome. Councilman Riggernbach, we will now begin with your two-minute opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you very much to our host for providing this opportunity. It's so nice to be able to have one of these forums where we can actually look at each other without the fear of disconnecting by hitting the wrong button on our computers. I am Tim Riggernbach, the incumbent councilman. I am a financial advisor at Merrill Lynch during the day, but probably the thing that defines me the most is being a husband and father. My wife Barbara and I celebrated our 25th anniversary last year and were the proud parents of five kids, three daughters and two sons. They've all gone to Peoria Public Schools, and our three daughters, two have already graduated from Bradley and one is on her way for the May commencement. That probably really sums up my motivation for running again. You know, as I look back at what we've done in these last years since I've been councilman, I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish, whether it's in the neighborhoods and providing a half million dollars to the neighborhoods of the East Bluff for rehab, whether it's the sidewalk improvements that we've put in throughout the neighborhoods on the Mount Holly, on Giles Lane, on New York, whether it's the $1.6 million we've given to small businesses in the last year to help them fight the COVID pandemic. Whatever it takes to make a difference is what needs to be done for our city. Being transparent and open is something that I pride myself on. I'm also particularly proud of the endorsements I've gathered through the race. I have the Business PAC of Central Illinois as well as the Labor Council of West Central Illinois supporting me. To have business and labor both, I think, is a good sign of the collaboration and work that I've been able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Thetford?
Thank you. I too want to thank the Monday Night Gathering and the Collaborative Peoria for sponsoring this event this evening. For those of you who don't know, I began my professional career as a high school French and English teacher. I then went back to school, went to law school with my older son at that time, who was four. That was an interesting experience. I'm semi-retired at this time. The bulk of my legal career was spent in elder law, nursing home abuse, Medicare and Medicaid issues. I actually remember working as general counsel for the Department of Aging with Equip for Equality on a number of senior issues. I'm currently on the Board of Trustees for Illinois Central College. I'm also on Heartland Health Services Board. As some of you may know, I did serve on the Peoria City Council representing the 3rd District from 1997 to 2005. I have two sons, of which I am very proud. One of them is a lawyer in Washington, D.C., specializing in going after handling large claims of individuals and companies who have had their insurance claims denied. My other son lives here in Peoria and has blessed me with my five-year-old granddaughter, who you've seen on possibly some of my flyers. I'm running for the office because I'm concerned about the trajectory of more taxes and fees and less services and programs. I too have some endorsements of which I'm very proud. One of them is the PAC LLC promoting the interests of Peoria's African-Americans. I'm also endorsed by the Peoria Firefighters and the Peoria Police Benevolent Association. Thank you.
Now, we'll begin your two-minute questions. First, Councilman Riggernbach, can you tell us why you are seeking reelection to the office of councilperson for District 3, and what do you offer that candidate Thetford does not?
I'm running for reelection for a very clear reason. I think the direction that we've taken the district, the city, in the last 12 years has been a positive one. We have had some incredible challenges. When I came on board, we were in the middle of the worst financial crisis since the Great Depression in 2009. We just experienced the COVID shutdowns. To be able to get the city to solvency through all that is something that I'm particularly proud of. You got to make tough decisions. You got to level with the folks that you're dealing with, and I think we've done that. With a new mayor coming on board, I think it's important to have some consistency. As they say, having somebody who's been around the block, sitting around the horseshoe is a good thing, and I think the perspective that I bring and the leadership that I brought, whether it's in the departments or into the community, has been something that's been well-received. Thank you.
Candidate Thetford, can you tell us why you are seeking election for the office of councilperson for District 3, and what do you offer that Councilman Riggernbach does not?
I'm seeking the 3rd District Council seat for something that I alluded to in my introductory statement, and that is the unfortunate trajectory that I see the city embarking on. I see, over the past 10 to 12 years, increases in property taxes, imposition of new fees, while at the same time, services and programs are being diminished. That's not a trajectory that you generally see in many municipalities. What I think I bring to the table that Councilman Riggernbach can't is that I previously served on the council and have had time to reflect on that experience and the issues and the problems, and have since that time served on some other boards such as Heartland Health Services and Illinois Central College Board of Trustees, learned some additional knowledge regarding building consensus, reviewing budgets, addressing fiscal issues. And I think, you know, one person, and I don't remember who this was, said it best: wisdom is really knowledge plus time. And I think that I had significant knowledge and utilized it to my best ability previously. Now, time has ensued. I've had additional experiences, and I want to bring that to the table for the people of the 3rd District.
Thank you for your brevity, both of you. I'll stay with you, candidate Thetford. As you know, Councilman Riggernbach, who was elected in 2009 and is serving his third term as councilman of District 3, in three minutes, what do you say to convince those voters who are undecided that despite his long-term tenure, your vision and plans for District 3 are best for the constituents in that district?
My vision of the trajectory that I think the 3rd District should take is more along the lines of the trajectory that I believe what we had when I previously served on the council. Previously, when I served on the council, there was an incredible hesitancy to impose fees and to increase taxes, and there was a great deal more respect, quite frankly, for public safety. Very, very, very rarely were cuts made to police and fire. That seems to be more the norm these days, and unfortunately, police and fire, to a great extent, are being blamed for the financial distress of the city. When I've talked to people of the 3rd District today, I was interested as to whether or not the issues of today were indeed the issues of yesterday, and they were. People are concerned about police and fire, and they're terribly concerned about the increases in property taxes and the imposition of fees. So if people truly are concerned about those things, then they should elect an individual who not only is endorsed by police and fire, but who believes in public safety to the point that they are not going to make those kinds of cuts.
Thank you. Councilman Riggernbach, as a third-term incumbent to the City Council, in three minutes, how do you convince these voters who are undecided that your efforts in Council District 3 continue to be relevant and effective for the constituents in that district?
Thank you. Great question, and I think, again, it really goes back to the record. And after 12 years, as I contemplated running again, I knew there'd be things that could be used against me, if you will, as we talk about it. But let's take a look at some of the things that we've been able to accomplish. In the East Bluff, arguably the challenged part of the district, we put together the East Village Grow-Sell Housing Program. This program has put $500,000, that's a half-million dollars, into housing rehab for the residential homeowners in that area. We have been out there proactively helping people take advantage of this to make those improvements. By having collaboration and working with other organizations, the city was able to lasso in a $3 million grant from the state attorney general, Lisa Madigan. That attorney general grant allowed us to build six new single-family homes, eight duplexes, four complete house rehabs, and demolish 20 nuisance properties. That $3 million morphed into over $9 million worth of investment in the East Bluff. The Wisconsin Avenue Business Corridor Plan was something that, as these other things were happening, we decided we need to focus on the business there as well. So we took a team, and we walked Wisconsin Avenue, knocking on the doors of the businesses, asking the business owners what they need. Now, our good friend Ronald Reagan always said the most terrifying words are to hear "I'm from the government and I'm here to help," but we tried to play that into a constructive conversation, and we had some incredible dialogue, which was then followed up with neighborhood meetings.
Thank you.
That's three minutes? Wow.
Are we... Excuse me, I'm sorry.
What was that?
No, no, we had a curriculum of form. Okay. It was two minutes rebuttal, that's what, two minutes, and then you get one-minute rebuttal.
I see, okay.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood that, sorry.
That's okay. I wanted to go back to you anyway.
All right. Well, I was wondering if I could have an opportunity to...
Yes, yes, please. You have one minute.
And while I'm certainly not going to dispute some of the accomplishments that Councilman Riggernbach has addressed, I think it gets back to priorities. Those things are important, but we can't accomplish what we need to accomplish in some of our neighborhoods, particularly the East Bluff, if it's at the detriment of public safety. Because public safety is just as critical, if not much more critical, to the livelihood of those neighborhoods than some of the other accomplishments. And I too have played a role, not being on the council, as a board member and officer for Heartland Health Services, and can actually take some credit for that plaza remaining in Heartland's hands and for the implementation and existence of that police resource center there. So yes, Wisconsin is important, and I appreciate what you've done, and I just want to indicate what I have done as well.
Thank you. Councilman?
I believe in public safety, and to imply otherwise is just a little bit hard to take. I also believe in living within our means, and the reality is, the city faced a $25 to $35 million deficit through no fault of our own with the COVID situation. When I came on council, again, we were in the worst economic crisis ever. You cannot have it both ways. You can't say there's no taxes, no fees, no additional spending, and then say you're going to hire all these people back. So let's look at it. Let's prioritize together. That's the name of the game, folks. But to say, to imply that I wouldn't believe in public safety is a little hard to swallow.
Okay.
So are we on a new question, or are we on what?
You each had one minute to rebut, so you've had yours, and now he's had his.
Got it, okay.
So we're moving on to the third question.
Okay.
Councilman Riggernbach, back to you. What do you say to the citizens of your district that say that you are a nice guy, but your voting record shows that you consistently vote in concert with the mayor's agenda and the city manager's recommendations without giving innovative ideas to restore and revitalize your district enough consideration, and that your district continues to experience a rise in violent crime, vacant storefronts, and non-owner occupied deteriorating housing stock? What would you say to that?
I would say that it's a little bit more complicated than a headline would be. I have been very transparent, whether you're talking about the act... What was the first part of the question? If I can pause for one quick second?
Voting consistently with the mayor's agenda and the city manager's recommendation.
I think I've also had a record of challenging both of them, whether it's the mayor or the city manager, to come back with new solutions. We have looked at some incredible ways to be thinking outside the box. Again, this East Village Grow-Sell Housing Program, I just have to keep coming back to that, because that was something innovative that no other city had done in regards to it's if it had never been done in Peoria, clearly. We were going to take something that allowed and facilitated development to benefit the homeowners, to benefit the residences. Probably the most glaring thing I voted against the mayor on was the River Trail Apartments, that I voted against that, and he was pretty adamant in favor of that, as was the majority of the council, it was a seven to four vote. Always looking outside the box is something that I think I've got a reputation on, and if you look at some of the votes, and that vote in particular was a very creative one, because I was working with the two buss at that time, Councilwoman Jensen and Councilwoman Aikerson, to see if there was some middle ground, to see if there was a more creative way to do those apartments. And it ended up the developer didn't want to do it, so we stopped that. But to say I voted in line with the mayor all the time is not accurate.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Thetford, what do you say to the citizens that ask why you have decided to return as a candidate for councilperson for District 3 after serving on the City Council from 1997 to 2005? And if elected, what will you do to restore and revitalize the troubled, crime-ridden areas in the East Bluff while encouraging business to return to the district?
Ms. O'Neill, before I address that question, might I have an opportunity to rebut Councilman Riggernbach's response there?
Yes, well, I'll give you 45 seconds.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one minute.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that, and then I might have to have you say the other question again. So in response to Councilman Riggernbach's answer, it's actually been rather clear to me, and not certainly just to me, that he's not been an independent representative of the 3rd District, but that he indeed has signed on very fervently to the mayor's agenda. And while that's all right to agree with the mayor sometimes, to consistently agree is a bit much. I'm actually told, advised by some current members of the City Council, that while Mr. Riggernbach did vote against the River Trail Apartments initially, after the mayor refusing to speak to him for a period of time, he then changed, shifted gears, and voted at least five or six times in support of it. And also, you know, everybody can say they believe in public safety, but if you believe in public safety, you don't close two fire stations and cut off jobs as well.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I apologize. Could you repeat the other question?
And I'll get a rebuttal then after she answers it.
Yes, you will. Yes, you will. Okay, would you like to hear the question again?
Please, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. What do you say to the citizens that ask why you have decided to return as a candidate for councilperson for District 3 after serving on the City Council from 1997 to 2005? And if elected, what will you do to restore and revitalize the troubled, crime-ridden areas in the East Bluff while encouraging businesses to return to the district?
As I believe I mentioned before, but I'll reiterate, I've decided to run for reelection to the 3rd District because I honestly believe that I would bring to the table some enhanced knowledge about how to deal with issues, particularly fiscal issues. I think I bring a little more fiscal austerity back to the council. And also, as I've mentioned before, I'm very concerned about the decreased emphasis on public safety. And quite candidly, we can work on housing, that's great, we need to. We can work on street lighting, we can repair the sidewalks, we can do all of those things and make the East Bluff look better. But if we continue to cut police and fire, if we close fire stations, by the way, we only have one in the 3rd District, and that's Station 10. So if we close that one, we don't even have one in District 3. And by the way, when there is a fire and more than one station has to respond, then there's not even any coverage currently in District 3. But we're not going to be able to address the crime issues. I've been talking directly to police officers that service the 3rd District. They're disturbed about the number of police officers that are working per shift, and they are stressed. So yes, working on the neighborhoods is important, and I did that before, and I would continue to do that as well. But we have to reinstate those positions. We have to build back up public safety to help the East Bluff and other troubled neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councilman Riggernbach, one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. I did support the extension of the River Trail redevelopment agreement after having voted and spoken out against it. And you know why? Because we were threatened with a lawsuit. And I explained that at the time, and I'll explain it again for those who weren't listening then, that sometimes you extend something to avoid having to pay a big settlement down the road. We saw that with another lawsuit that we can talk about later. But the City Council was accused of not doing its due diligence, and we ended up having to pay back a loan with interest. So by making these extensions, I was able to accomplish two things. We killed the River Trail Apartment, like I voted against it, and we avoided a lawsuit. So that, to me, is kind of a win. And I might add that in conjunction with that, we were able to buy some more riverfront land, so now we have access and green space all the way from downtown up to Detwiler Marina. So that's something I'm particularly proud of.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, back to you, candidate Thetford. As you know, the city of Peoria will be hiring a new police chief. Even though the city manager is responsible for the hiring of the police chief, the council's input is part of the process. What is the most important attribute that the chief of police must possess, and how will you gauge if his or her performance is successful or not?
First of all, I think it's important that the start of the entire process is right. And by that, there has to be a sincere effort to develop a diverse pool of candidates, both possibly from within the existing force as well as from, you know, external candidates. We certainly need to be open to, you know, to male, female, different ethnicities, what have you. Clearly, it's going to be important to find individuals with the kind of educational background, working background that they could bring to a municipality of our size. We actually do have individuals in this community that are clearly qualified right now, that are working in other areas of police work, that I would hope would be applying for this position. As far as the most important attribute, I don't know that there's any one. I think you need to have a police chief that is a good communicator, a chief that can communicate to the staff, can communicate to the council, and can, you know, work with the council. I would be looking to, working with that police chief on what his or her plan would be for the 3rd District to replace... Right now, we're down to 200 officers, I understand. I believe, you know, 10 years ago, we were at 250. So while it may not seem that bad that we just lost 16, you have to keep in mind, again, the trajectory of the loss of those positions over this period of time. So I'm actually looking forward to a new police chief, and I think he or she will bring, you know, a fresh new perspective, which will be helpful.
Thank you. Councilman? The same question. What would you be looking for in a police chief? What qualities should the new police chief possess, and how will you gauge if that person is successful or not?
Thank you. I think, I'll tell you what I think is important in a minute, but you know what? We gave the public a chance to weigh in on this also. We put a survey out there asking folks what they were looking for in this new police chief. Because, let me tell you, the last year has been an incredibly trying time, an incredibly tense time in police work across the country. So let's acknowledge that, and let's see what the people of Peoria want. That's something... That's something out of the box, if you will, that the city manager put and proposed us to do. I think community relations has to be one of the most important characteristics of that chief. Lauren Marion did an amazing job reaching out to the neighborhood groups. If there was issues in the East Bluff, he would come to a meeting. We've had past chiefs, Chief Mitchell came to the Knowles when there was issues going on there. We have been very fortunate in having some powerful leadership. Clearly, there's work to be done, and it needs to go all the way to the rank and file. But I think having that community relation mindset, that the community-based policing, the residential officer program, those are things that we need to expand, and those are the things that I've been hearing for years, that we want to go back to knowing our beat officer, if you will, and that's an important part of that position. Thank you.
Okay. You'll have one minute to rebut that?
I mean, I won't dispute that community relations is certainly an important attribute and something that, and I think that that kind of goes along with what I was talking about in terms of communication. But, yeah, so I'm certainly, I'm not going to dispute that.
Councilman?
I'm good.
Well, I have a question for both of you on this one, because I didn't hear either of you address how you would measure or gauge the new police chief's success. So could I have 45 seconds from each of you? Starting with you, candidate Thetford.
How to gauge the police chief's success?
In their future performance. What would you be looking for?
Well, I think probably the first thing I would be looking for is a little more advocacy to returning our police force to something a little closer to that 250 staff that we had previously. I'm not sure that, I don't know if our current police chief was being listened to, or if he was actually advocating for an increase in the force. But, I mean, I would look to the extent to which, I mean, you'd have to look at the crime statistics throughout the district. I would look to whether or not that police chief was willing to work with me on issues that I thought, or issues that the neighborhoods felt were important in the district, and would support. I think the concept of a police resource center on Wisconsin is a great idea. I'd like to see other police resource centers throughout the Third District. So that's how I would gauge the success. Sometimes, I don't think, you know, I'm not sure that there's been that same sort of interaction, if you will.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Councilman?
Well, I can assure you, the interaction has been there. And I must have been absent at the meetings on the resource center that you were part of, because I never saw you at any of those.
Well, those were the Heartland meetings, actually.
How would you measure the success of the future performance?
The success of the future chief is really going to be dependent upon the community acceptance. Clearly, the crime statistics are the driver that everybody looks at and that you see. But how is he accepted in the community? Whether it's the neighborhood groups, the homeowners' associations, that's a critical part of the job. And it's very nuanced, if you will, but I think you know if it's right. And the city manager gives annual reviews to his direct reports, and the City Council gives an annual review to the city manager, and that dialogue has to be part of that metrics.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. You guys are doing great. Okay. Councilman Riegenbach, we're going to stick with you. For years, the citizens have watched while city services, police, fire personnel, public service jobs, and public safety equipment continued to be cut. Now with the 2021 $3.7 million shortfall, an additional fee has been imposed on the taxpayers for police and fire pensions, because the City Council elected the option to pay the minimum into the pension funds, knowing that the financial obligation will increase exponentially year after year. Is the problem the City Council giving poor direction to the city manager? Or does city management lack vision to offer new and innovative alternatives to these cuts to achieve a balanced budget?
Ultimately, the way, there's two answers to this. We need to grow the economy. We need to get more businesses located in Peoria. We need to increase that productivity, to increase the tax base. But we also need to get down to Springfield, and we've talked about this with our friends in public safety, that this year, in 2021, the city's pension obligation is $26 million. By 2025, that will grow to $35 million. This is not because of any dereliction on our part, even when Council, former Councilwoman Thetford was there. The city's been making its actuarially required contributions. The problem is, the state tells us by 2040, we have to be at a 90% funding rate, which is an arbitrary number that they picked. We've been asking for a rolling amortization. That, I can get into all the details of what that means, but that would be a huge step in making us sound, making us fulfill our obligation, but not making an arbitrary deadline. We had consolidation of the downstate pension funds a couple years ago. And as a financial planner, I can tell you, that's really important, because now the funds from Peoria can be invested along with Rockford and Springfield, and we're going to be able to eventually see some economies of scale. That hasn't happened yet, it's very much a work in progress. But there needs to be a focus on job creation, job growth, and there also needs to be a realization in Springfield that some of these arbitrary metrics that they put in place are not realistic. They even go to the details that we'll talk about later.
Thank you.
That we'll talk about later.
Candidate Thetford, I will repeat the question, because it was really long.
Thank you. Thanks.
For years, the, would you like to rebut that first, or would you like to answer the question first?
I'll just leave it to you.
I'll leave it to you.
That's fine. I'll answer the question.
For years, the citizens have watched while city services, as you've mentioned, police and fire personnel, public service jobs, and public safety equipment continued to be cut. Now with a 2021 $3.7 million shortfall, an additional fee has been imposed on the taxpayers for police and fire pensions, because the City Council elected the option to pay the minimum into the pension funds, knowing that the financial obligation will increase exponentially year after year. Is the problem the City Council giving poor direction to the city manager? Or does the city management lack vision to offer new and innovative alternatives to achieve a balanced budget?
Well, to begin with, you know, it's interesting, because when we've had this question posed previously, we've usually been told, you know, not to talk about Springfield. But you really have to talk about Springfield first. Quite honestly, there are a number of things that Springfield could do. First of all, the legislation that they enacted is what drives those pensions. So that's, to some extent, that's the whole unfunded mandate argument, if you will. So they could certainly help, help pay those pension costs. They could actually establish individual amounts per municipality. They could also, as Councilman Riegenbach indicated, they could push out some of that, so that the cities could, particularly now, in light of the pandemic and what have you, could deal with it a little more effectively. But going back to the city manager, the city manager is the council's one employee. And the city manager should not be driving what's happening at City Hall. The City Council should be establishing the priorities and the policies. And the City Council should not be allowing this extensive cutting of city services and programs. While, you know, there's great talk about living within the means, and it seems like, you know, yes, the council is, the city manager is saying, we have to live within our means as far as city programs and services, so we have to make these cuts. But when it comes to other things, like road repairs or whatever, we're not going to live within our means anymore, we're just going to impose new taxes and new fees. So, yes, we do need to increase the tax base as well. Yes, I do think that post-pandemic, our sales tax revenue and other revenues are going to be better and improve. We're getting an influx of COVID relief funds. I hear some people say that's just the beginning.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Councilman Riegenbach, would you like a minute rebuttal?
Sure, thank you. First of all, the city manager does not set policy, and he never has in the years I've been on council. He provides alternatives. And if you watch our Tuesday night meetings, you'll see he gets a lot of pushback on a lot of his ideas. So let's be clear, the choices are not very pretty, but the city manager offers choices. And yes, we have to live within our means. That's the reality of it. We're not, the federal government is printing trillions of dollars out there. We don't have that luxury. We have to be honest with our constituents. This COVID relief is going to be a huge help for us to help restore some of the fund balances and get things back to where we would like them. But let's not forget, that is a one-time shot. So we cannot use that to hire people that are going to be an ongoing expense. We need to use that for one-time expenses.
Thank you. Since you elected to answer the question rather than use your minute rebuttal, candidate Thetford, would you like a minute of rebuttal?
Sure, thank you. You know, these are difficult times. And while generally, you would not necessarily look at a one-time influx of funds to address operational needs, these are different times. And when you're dealing with significant cuts to public safety, if you truly believe in public safety, you are going to restore some of those positions. And hope that, as a result, you know, the neighborhoods are going to be stronger, the businesses are going to be stronger, and you're going to be able to recoup some of that. But there are also, you know, and we have certainly differed on this issue before, but there are external funds available. And I know, to some extent, the city has been applying for some of them, but not to the extent that they should. And we used to, when I was on the council before, apply for all kinds of public safety grants, that we generally received on an annual basis, not just a one-time basis.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Riegenbach, as you know, there cannot be equality without socioeconomic equity. Black residents in Peoria have one of the highest poverty rates in the state, with a median income of $28,000, which is 46.4% of the white residents of Peoria's median income. The poverty rate is 34.5% compared to 9.3% for white Peorians. While serving the council for the last 12 years, what actions have you taken to reverse this trend? And how have you tried to influence other people on the council to support your efforts?
That really is the question that so many of these other questions are hinged on, in my opinion. Because until we address that, the other issues are going to continue to fester. We need, you know, the expression, "It takes a village," is something that is so, so true. We can't just rely on the schools to raise our kids for us. We need to reach out at a young age, and whether it's the churches, the nonprofits, we have the Boys and Girls Club, we have the Dream Center, we have things like that that will help make that first step. PCCO has an amazing Head Start program that we need to encourage to help empower the families to get their kids into that kind of programming. We, that's, there's not, I don't see an easy fix to that, but it needs to be organized, and it needs to be a very systemic, maybe that's not the right word. We need to make sure that we're doing it with the thought of what's going to happen in the next steps down the road. One of my daughters teaches at Tree Win, and she sees things there that she didn't see at Hines and Von Steuben when she was going to school. And you know what? We, until we can empower the families, I think we're going to continue to see this cycle. So finding a way to break that once and for all is going to be the first step. And I've worked with financial literacy issues. I know EB&amp;HS has partnered with Heartland Bank to actually help people get checking accounts and get into the system.
Thank you, Councilman. Candidate Thetford, allow me to restate the question for you.
Sure, thank you.
As you know, there cannot be equality without socioeconomic equity. Black residents in Peoria have one of the highest poverty rates in the state, with a median income of $28,000, which is 46.4% of white residents' median income. The poverty rate is 34.5% compared to 9.3% for white Peorians. As, if you are elected to the City Council for District Three, how will you work towards reversing this trend? And how will you lead other elected officials, community leaders, and concerned citizens to participate?
Well, first of all, I've actually, for, I've been on Illinois Central College's Board of Trustees for eight years now. And I've been working on what we realize, or what we believe, as a board, is the most important issue, if you will, with respect to changing this terrible trajectory. And that is education. Particularly, post-secondary education, providing parents and individuals with the type of educational tools that they need to have some sort of family sustaining wage, and to break that cycle of multiple minimum-wage jobs in an attempt to provide food and sustenance to their family. Just recently, well, first of all, I think many of you probably already know this, but we've learned that 90% of a child's brain is actually developed by age six. So early childhood education is paramount. So we need to support our existing schools to, with respect to those efforts. In my role on Illinois Central College as Board of Trustees, I've fought to reopen the Early Childhood Education Center, which I'm happy to say has, is now going to happen. It wasn't going to, but it is now. And other things, we need to make sure, services. Education, we need to do what we can to support the existing schools, and to support the parents with respect to post-secondary education. We need to provide services. You know, the medical, the free medical services offered by Heartland throughout, not just the Third District, but throughout the city, are imperative. Without proper health, and nutrition, and medical care, those families are really going to continue to suffer, those low-income families. So I would continue on the council to support those efforts as much as possible.
Councilman Riegenbach, I invite you to give a one-minute rebuttal, if you choose.
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate the work you've done on the ICC board on that issue, Gail, and hope you can continue that for a long time to come. But I would say that ICC is such a hidden gem. And the Peoria Promise Initiative enables kids who graduate from Peoria schools to go there for free. What a blessing that has been for our family, as well as thousands, literally, of others. So, again, I come back to empowering and looking for ways to do that, and we certainly acknowledge the benefit that ICC brings to our community. And let's also look at some other creative things that have been going on, that, the Wraparound Center is something that Dr. Karat has really championed. Offering those kind of services is something that needs to be done on a larger scale. And we've talked about doing that in the East Bluff as well. Thank you.
Do I have an opportunity to rebut at all?
You have, you have one minute as well. You have one minute as well.
Thank you. All right, the one thing that I want to say is specifically with respect to Peoria Promise. Peoria Promise is not the same Peoria Promise that started out, all right? Peoria Promise started out as an opportunity for individuals who went to District 150 schools to be able to go to ICC right away and have that subsidized and paid for. That's not the way it's run now. Now, you have to go, you have to get a certain grade point average, and then you can contact Peoria Promise and get them to reimburse you.
No, no.
Well, that's what I've been told by families. So, I'm told that that's the way that it works. So, perhaps I'm wrong, but that's what I've been told.
Yeah, that's the one.
Well, I don't think so. I honestly don't think so. I'd be, well, I'll look into it, but I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to a question from the audience, and I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Riegenbach, on this one. An audience member wants to know, why are the citizens of Peoria responsible for police and fire pensions when those same police and fire personnel are not required to live in the city that pays their salary and their pensions? You have two minutes.
That's a question I hear a lot, and that was bargaining, something that the police and firefighters want at the bargaining table. That's not something the city gave up. That's something they want at the bargaining table. So, that's the short answer.
Same question?
You know, that's a difficult issue, one that we actually addressed as well in my previous tenure on the council. I'm pretty big on police and fire living within the city. I understand that maybe on occasion, there can be some housing issues and what have you. You know, if that's currently in the contract, I would certainly want to have that looked at again. That's a concern.
Okay, well, we're going to move on. Councilwoman Riegenbach, there are many unsolved crimes in the city. Many believe that it's due to a lack of confidence in the current police system. Do you believe there needs to be police reform with emphasis on community policing?
I would love to see an increase in community policing. I think having that relationship with the officers is what gives people confidence, and when there's a crime, gives them the willingness to step forward. Again, I go back to our residential police officers. We have firsthand experience of how impactful that is in the neighborhoods that have that. I'm so excited that we now have five of those officers throughout the neighborhoods. And there's no way to describe what it is to see the officer shooting baskets with the kids in the neighborhood. There's no way to describe what it's like when he has a wiener roast and invites the kids from the neighborhood. To see that interaction, that's something that a lot of us probably grew up with. We loved our police officers. Today, that's not always the case, so community policing is a must.
Thank you. Kenny Thetford, same question, would you like me to repeat it?
Please, thank you.
There are many unsolved violent crimes in our city. Many believe this is due to a lack of confidence in the current police system. Do you believe there needs to be police reform with an emphasis on community policing?
Well, I'm a very big supporter of community policing, but I don't know that we can say that the issue with unsolved crimes has to do with a lack of confidence. I think if you look again at the numbers, if we used to have, if 10 years ago, to address the issues in the neighborhoods and in the city, we needed 250 police officers, but now by some magical matrix, we only need 200. That may indeed be what is driving the fact that there's many unsolved crimes. Yes, more community policing, more mental health support to the police to the extent, and training and what have you, although I'm certainly not going to purport to be someone to tell the police what type of things that they need to do necessarily. But I think most of them would look to more education. And we need more of those police resource centers, which, as we've talked about, my role in the police resource center is simply having, serving currently on Heartland Health Services Board, encouraging them to buy that plaza when Kroger left, and encourage them to look at the possibility of a substation or something like the police resource center that is now there. The beauty of that resource center is that it's not a substation, actually, but it's an opportunity for people in the neighborhood to stop in, to find out about things, services, food pantries, information, other services that are available in the neighborhood, and also have conversations in a non-threatening way to establish an informal relationship, if you will, with the police there. So, I wish that that's not necessarily being staffed quite as much as it should be. I've had some complaints, actually, from some people in the neighborhood that the hours are kind of iffy, and there isn't always someone there. So, I think we need to look at that.
Councilwoman, would you like a minute to respond?
I would just say that there is, the resource center does have a different job description than, say, a substation would. And Chris Johnson's just done a standout job, whether it's collecting food and assisting the food pantry at the East Bluff Community Center, or collecting coats last winter. He does a lot of things, and we don't want to confuse that with having an officer on duty there. We have our residential officer, and I keep going back to that because it really is something that impacts the neighborhood. We have that residential officer there who has more flexible hours as needed, and he's able to meet with the folks. And it doesn't have that big police banner on it. So, that gives people confidence to go in, and they can have a little more subtlety, if you will.
Thank you. Kenny Thetford, would you like a minute to respond to that at all?
No, that's fine. I'm fine, thank you.
Well, I have a couple of questions for each of you. Councilwoman Riegenbach, I'll start with you. Kenny Thetford mentioned something earlier about a choice between fixing roads and funding for additional police and fire positions that we've had to cut in the last year. Is that a fair comparison, or were there federal grants or state grants or something that were already in place for those roads? Is that a fair choice, that the council in the past year or two chose to fix roads with money that could have been used to save those positions at the Fire and Police Department?
No, it's not. I think if I understood her comment, she was talking about the 2015 budget package that included $8.9 million in new street funding. If you remember, and if you've driven on the streets lately, you know that there's a big need for potholes getting filled. We put together what's called the PCI Index, the Pavement Condition Index, which actually we're on our third cycle now. So, every three years, we go through and we have the streets analyzed. This includes the substructure of the street, so it's not just if the surface is blown off. So, as part of that budget, we were very specific in earmarking funds for that. Again, I talk about being transparent and honest about it. We set these pools of money up for that, and that's where the money's going. So, we can certainly adjust unrestricted funds and general funds and stuff, but motor fuel tax, for instance, needs to go where it's earmarked. So, that's the driver on that.
Okay. And, Kenny Thetford, for you, you'd made a comment earlier about people coming to you and constituents coming to you, and if I misunderstood, please correct me on that, too. But the way I understood it, that constituents of the 3rd district were coming to you and saying that they were somehow blaming, or that the council was blaming the police and fire for the financial predicament that we find ourselves in. Did I misunderstand you on that? And if not, could you explain it?
No, I mean, it's, there appears to have been a rather concerted effort over the last 10 years at least to help address the financial shortfalls, if you will, in the city's budget by cutting police and fire. And that has continued. I mean, the cuts that I mentioned in some of my information that I put out are just a portion of the cuts, quite frankly, that have occurred over that period of time. So, and what people are trying to figure out is, it doesn't make sense to them that we're cutting programs and services, but yet we're imposing, we're increasing property taxes and imposing all of these fees. So, it doesn't, and it doesn't make sense to me, quite frankly, either, especially if the council is, if Councilwoman Riegenbach and other council members are actually listening to their constituents. The constituents are telling me and telling others that the most important things to them are police, fire, and no new taxes and fees. And that is exactly the opposite of what a majority of the council, including Councilwoman Riegenbach, is doing.
One-minute rebuttal?
When you have a 12-year record, it's easy to pull a vote out of the air and say, "You screwed up." But I'm telling you, the discussion we had on virtually every single thing on that mailer was vetted with public discussion. But it's not just police and fire that we've cut. There's been cuts in public works and community development. When you don't have the money, you can't spend it. And that's the reason where we are today. I'm still waiting to hear how you're going to fund some of this stuff. You said you hope that the economy comes back. Well, hope that, that's not something we can put in the budget. We have to have dollars and cents. And frankly, that's what we've done. And ultimately, the choice will be made on next Tuesday as to whether people want that responsible, clear direction as to spending money or not.
Thank you. One-minute rebuttal for you, candidate Thetford?
Sure, thank you. Councilwoman Riegenbach and I have a totally different philosophy, a completely different philosophy about how to address issues like this. You know, I served on the council for eight years. Yes, it was, you know, some time ago, but in eight years, when the administration, when city managers, different ones, would come to us and say, "We've got to increase property taxes. We've got to look at this fee." We said, "No." We said, "No." For eight years, we never increased property taxes. Two years, we actually decreased it, much to the chagrin of those particular city managers. There was one fee that I supported while I was on the council, and I wish to heck I'd never done it, but I did it. And that was the imposition of the garbage fee. And people that ran against me and other people on the council, part of their platform was, "Get rid of it."
Thank you.
"When guess, it's not gone."
Thank you. As a disclaimer, please be advised that in no way does the following question suggest that reparation for systemic racism that has plagued African-Americans since 1619 can be resolved through revenues from the sales of cannabis. Yet, the city council of Evanston, Illinois, has approved the nation's first reparations program for black residents whose families have been impacted by the effects of decades of discriminatory housing practices. The first initiative of the $10 million plan is the Restorative Housing Reparations Program. That would distribute up to $25,000 for housing per eligible resident with funding coming from a 3% tax on recreational marijuana sales. Starting first with you, Kenny Thetford, what are your views on a policy such as this being implemented in Peoria?
Well, you know, certainly, I guess my hat's off to Evanston for being the first to step forward and make an attempt to address this issue. I think what's interesting in my, and this is an issue, quite honestly, that I was not familiar with. I can't speak for Councilwoman Riegenbach, but when it was posed to us previously, I wasn't familiar with. But I have since looked into it, and it's, what I find fascinating about it is that, well, apparently, a majority of the Evanston council, or whatever we call it, believes that this indeed is reparation. Alderwoman Cindy Fleming, the African-American alderwoman on the city council, is opposed to it, and indicating that it's really not reparations at all. It is really just a restorative housing plan. It's not reparations, and that it doesn't go far enough. It doesn't really address the underlying issue. So, I'm certainly not opposed to utilizing revenue for something along those lines, but I think what would be most important for me is to gather more information about the housing plan that's being proposed, what's being proposed beyond that, and getting a little more information from Alderwoman Cindy Fleming, who's a fourth or fifth-generation individual in Evanston, as to why she's not supportive of this. So, again, it's good to look at something new, and it seems to be, to a great extent, a positive thing, but why is someone who clearly could benefit, and the people she represents possibly benefit, why is she not supportive of it? So, I think I'd want to gather a lot more information, learn a lot more about it. But I certainly would be very interested and supportive of looking at it, yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. I think, again, and not speaking for Ms. Thetford, but we both heard about this last week on one of the forums we were on, and it's very intriguing. I think it's important to remember that the whole legalizing cannabis included a huge restorative justice piece. Our own Jahan Gordon Booth was very instrumental in the passage of the entire bill, but very clear about what that can mean, about expunging some of the records of folks who were caught up in the war on drugs. So, let's, I guess, I would never say never, but let's take a look at how this restorative justice is working right now and see what's been done with the progress in the last year. But let's keep an open mind. Clearly, we need to have some dialogue, and I would be very interested to sit down with our representative to find out if that was part of the discussion at the state level when the law was passed. So, I think, again, the way the United States has dealt with the issue of, was that stopped?
No.
No.
The way the United States has dealt with the post-Civil War issue just leaves us wanting. We were in South Carolina as a family a couple of years ago, and it was very disturbing to us to see the glorification of some of these Southern generals and battles. So, I think there's still a larger discussion that we need to have as a people, and as men and women, living 100 years later, that what is the correct response? And I'm not prepared to say what that is, but I certainly want to listen to those who have more direct impact from that and see what needs to be done.
Yeah, and just, and...
Do you see a need for rebuttal?
Well, and again, maybe sort of rebuttal. So, I, you know, I just want to make it very clear that there's absolutely no question in my mind that systemic racism is an issue, and is an issue in Peoria, most definitely. To submit otherwise is just to really not, to have blinders on, quite frankly. But I, as a councilwoman, and I not being a black woman, would most definitely want to bring together a group of African-American leaders in our community to review what Evanston has done, to look at the use of those funds in that manner, and to provide information and background on what they themselves think would be the best use of those funds to the, you know, if indeed we receive those cannabis funds. So, that's an area that, just like, I didn't try to decide what were the most important issues in the 3rd district, I asked people, and I would want to do that here as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to respond?
No.
Okay. We will now ask representatives from candidate Thetford's side to come to the microphone. You can have two representatives, and each of you may ask one question to either candidate. Once you have asked your question, please be seated, and the candidate will have two minutes to answer, and then one minute for each, for the other candidate to give a follow-up response if needed. So I see someone stepped up. Could you introduce yourself and let us know what your question is?
My name is Mary Ann Epstein, and this is for Councilman Riegenbach. What are your top three spending ideas for the city, and please be specific?
My spending priorities? I think if you look at the budget that we have, the majority remains public safety. You can argue if it's enough or not, but that clearly is the number-one priority. Number two would be public works, because that really ties hand in glove with it, whether it's the streets and the infrastructure, the snow removal. And third would be community development, the neighborhoods. That clearly is something that's near and dear to my heart, near and dear to the people that I represent. So public safety, public works, and then the neighborhood enhancements that we can do.
Okay, that was three? Okay, you were fast. Candidate, would you like to give a response, a one-minute response?
Yes. I hear what you're saying, but I don't believe you. I hear you saying that public safety, public works, and community development are your top three spending priorities. We, if public safety is number one, I fail to understand how it's okay to close two firehouses and let go of 38 public safety jobs. Individuals in public works were also let go, and I'm not really sure exactly where we're at in terms of staffing and community development. But if those are the top three spending priorities, then I don't understand why some of the actions, I don't understand the actions that you've taken. So I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't translate to me in terms of what you've done.
Would you like a minute to respond to that?
Well, I think it's pretty clear that those are my priorities, because those are the budget items that have, that's exactly how they're ranked. I said I can argue that we should be spending more, but I would challenge you then to tell me where that additional money is going to come from. Because the question was, "What are my priorities?", and those are my priorities: public safety, public works, and community development. And that's clear. I'd love to spend more, but I can't hope that we have more money coming in. I have to balance the budget.
Okay. Is there anyone else from candidate Thetford's side that would like to ask a question?
Hello, my name is Phil Jordan. Councilman Riegenbach, you have voted to increase taxes and fees 10 times since 2015. How much more can Peorians afford? And wouldn't you agree with me that those tax increases are disincentive for businesses and homeowners to invest in Peoria?
You know what? That's a great question, and I would go back and look at when those particular votes were cast, because we don't have time to rehash the logic and the reasoning on it. I would just point out, two of the ones that are particularly popular are the combined sewer overflow, which is an unfunded mandate from the EPA, which is a project that I think we would all be in favor of in keeping the river clean. But the problem is, we've had this lawsuit pending for some 40 years, and no previous councils ever addressed the fact that we're going to have this settlement that we need to come up with. So that was put in place to deal with that. Living on Westwood, Mr. Jordan, I'm sure you know firsthand about the incredible stormwater issues and the fact that there needs to be attention to that. So I think that that's something that, yeah, it's not popular, but again, it's part of the logic that you pay as you go. And it's unfortunate that there wasn't a revenue stream put in place years ago when the EPA started this, but we've been able to negotiate, and now we're having the green solution, which is going to be a win for our neighborhoods, as well as addressing the stormwater issue specifically. And you know what? I live and work here, too, so I pay all that myself. So it's not pretty, but I think, again, go back to the discussion had with the public around the horseshoe when those issues were raised, and you'll find a little more logic than a soundbite will provide.
Thank you. This time, because we're running short of time, I'm going to give Councilman Riegenbach a chance for his guest to come to the microphone and ask a question now.
Good evening. My name's Donald Cummings. To Ms. Thetford, I remember in 2005 when you pushed to make friends of mine sell their homes for Cub Foods. I saw people displaced. I saw a lot of tears. I hear you speak that you are an individual who can go against the tide of a council to stand for justice for those that are oppressed. So my question to you, in making that decision to displace all of those people, number one, would you say to them, "Forgive me, that was a bad choice"? And number two, why would I, having watched you serve and become defeated in an election, turn around eight years later and somehow magically believe that that same person would not make the same bad decisions today?
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. So I, you know what? I'm not going to apologize for wanting to bring a quality grocery store to the Eastbluff. That project was actually a project that now Senator Dave Kaler wanted to actually embark on during his tenure as a council member and asked me to pursue. I wish, more than anyone else, that that project had been successful, but it was not. I think it's important to know that the, that project, unlike the Pure Marquette project, was actually subject to a number of public hearings, and individuals throughout the community had an opportunity to weigh in. And that was not just a Gale project. That was an eight-to-three vote on the city council, supported by Mayor Greaves, supported by former Councilman Eric Turner, supported by former Councilman Leonard Yunus. And again, that was an eight-to-three vote. I wish it had been successful. It wasn't. And with respect to the homeowners, I actually did work with the developer to make sure that those homeowners were given top dollar for their homes. Their homes, they received more money for their homes than they could have ever possibly expected to receive on the free market. So again, I wish that, I wish we had a Cub Foods there, because look at the desert, the food desert that we have in the 3rd District, and actually also in the 1st District. Now, as a result of, and I get no credit from this, from Councilman Riegenbach, but that's okay, I'm on the Heartland Health Services Board, and because of the partnership with Heartland Health Services and OSF, we have a top-notch medical care facility there now. It's not a grocery store, okay, which would have been the top priority, but it still is providing free medical services. Thank you.
One more question from Councilman Riegenbach's side, and then we'll go to closing statements. Ms. Thetford. Okay, if you could introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is LaShan Nun. This question is for Ms. Thetford. You said people are concerned with taxes, fees, and public safety, but people are concerned with keeping and staying in their homes as well. You were on council, you were on council, you supported the Cub Food development, which caused my mother and other homeowners to be forced from their homes, and they had to settle for pennies on the dollars. My mother did not receive top dollar for her house. You hurt a lot of people, including me. So tell me, why should we vote for you to become our councilperson again?
Well, and again, I won't bore you, LaShan, by going back over what I just said with respect to Cub Foods. I would definitely be interested in knowing your mother's name, and I would certainly get the information about the sale of that home, because that's not my understanding as to how those sales proceeded. So, and I actually did attempt to stay on top of that during that entire process. And I wasn't the only councilmember. Again, this was a project supported by eight councilmembers at the time, including the mayor. So I, again, I certainly apologize, that's not my understanding, that's not my information with respect to the sale of those homes.
Thank you. Because we did not have time for rebuttal, and we are running short on time, I'm going to give each of you one minute for a closing statement, starting with you, Councilman Riegenbach.
Thank you. And again, thank you to our hosts for a great evening. It's always good when we can discuss these issues face to face. Well, I would respectfully ask for your vote for a number of reasons. You know what you get with Tim Riegenbach. You get transparency, you get straightforward leadership. You might not always get the ice cream cone with the sprinkles on top, but you're going to get what you need. And that's the commitment that I've made throughout the years I've been councilman. The Business Pact of Central Illinois, made up of business leaders agrees. The West Central Illinois Building Trades are supporting me, and even our erstwhile opponent in the primary, Lawrence Murchard, has come out. So I think it's really important to know that I don't just hope that we're going to get additional revenue. I plan for it. That's what I've done for 12 years. That's what's kept us where we are. We've got work to do, but you know what? By working together, by building collaboration, we'll get the job done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to our hosts as well, the Monday Night Collaborative, excuse me, no, the Monday Night Gathering and the Collaborative Peoria, excuse me. I think what you need to ask is, Peoria and the 3rd District better now than 12 years ago? The answer is most definitely no. Taxes and fees have been increased or imposed at least 10 times, and that's 10 times since 2015. Councilman Riegenbach started his tenure in 2009, so in the last half of his tenure, he's supported the increase 10 times. Those increases have incurred while police and fire protection services have continued to be reduced, along with other programs and services. More taxes and fees, less services. It's time for a change. I ask also for your vote on April 6th.
Well, thank you. It has been a privilege to serve as your moderator for the evening, and I will now turn it over to Town Hall Coordinator, co-coordinator, Sherri Cannon, for final thoughts. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you so much, Susan. Did she not do a great job?
Yes, she did.
On behalf of the Collaborative Peoria and the Monday Gathering, we would like to take this time and opportunity to thank, which we just did, Susan, attorney Susan O'Neil. She absolutely did a fabulous job. And one of the things that, you know, we ask her to do is just be flexible, and when you see that there's interest in it, let them go at it. I think she let you guys go at it, and so you've given the people of your district an opportunity to hear and see where both of you stand. And so we want to thank you, Councilman Riegenbach, and you, Ms. Thetford, for coming out, sharing your vision with your people, and we wish you best luck on next Tuesday. We also want to thank the Peoria Housing Authority and Chairman Carl Cannon for the use of the Frank Hamel Community Center for these past three nights. And they've been so generous and helpful, and Officer McCall's been with us every night back there, and we appreciate you, chief, once again, for being here and helping us out. But most importantly, we want to thank you, our live audience and our virtual audience that tuned in tonight to listen to these very strong candidates. And public service is just not an easy job, and sometimes it's a thankless job. So we thank both of you for putting yourselves out there, for coming here tonight, and for even getting in the race. So thank you again. But these last three nights could not have happened without the excellence of my co-coordinator, Sherri Carter Allen. Sherri's a visionary, and she has just been working her heart off, and so I appreciate her. I appreciate Mrs. Jackie Petty and Mrs. Helen King in the back, who's been managing all the COVID-19 mitigation. We thank our timekeepers over here, Mr. Devon Synder, who's been here all three nights. We've got Nia Farland-Dry, and Cristel Frosto was here with us Monday night. So it took all of us to get this done, and so we were very glad to be able to do it in this kind of setting, because we thought that you guys would be able to talk a little bit more, get your ideas out, and have people that you talked to instead of that little screen. So we were very excited about this. But why vote? I just want to take you back a little bit. Give us the ballot, and we will no longer have to worry the federal government about our basic rights. Give us the ballot, and we will no longer plead to the federal government for passage of any anti-lynching laws. We will be the power of our vote, write the laws on the statute books of the South, and bring an end to the dastardly act of the hooded perpetrators of violence. Give us the ballot, and we will transform the salient misdeeds of bloodthirsty mobs into the calculated good deeds of orderly citizens. Give us the ballot, and we will fill our legislative halls with men of goodwill and send to the sacred halls of Congress men and women who will sign a Southern manifesto because of their devotion to the manifesto of justice. Give us the ballot, and we will place judges on the benches of the South and who will do just and love mercy. And we will place at the head of the Southern state governors who have felt not the tang of the human, but the glow of the divine. Give us the ballot, and we will quietly and non-violently, without rankar bitterness, implement the Supreme Court's decision of May 17, 1954. These words were spoken by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in a speech he made in Washington, D.C., in 1957. Even though we did finally get the right to vote as African-Americans in 1965, we've been fighting ever since to keep it. So I want to speak out to everybody that's listening, whether you're online or that you hear, the good news, in Illinois, there is little barrier for you to exercise your right to vote. We have early voting, no-excuse absentee voting, same-day voter registration, online registration, and previously incarcerated individuals do not lose their right to vote in Illinois. So we beseech you, exercise the franchise. Early voting has started, and Election Day is next Tuesday, April 6th. Good night, and we hope to see you at the polls. Thank you.